Open session public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. So we'll start with appointment of election workers. We are going to -- Eloise has requested that we appoint the following new election workers. Dave Roggeria.
Roggera.
Roggera. Robert Wheeler. Valerie Chapman. Katherine Hendrick. Judith Rothbard. Tate. Roger Bradley.
Seth.
Seth.
Seth Suko Bradley. Rosemary Marani. Robert Adaviano. Donna Adaviano. Mary Plenitky. Ronald Plenitky. And Brett Sweeney. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hello.
Hello.
One for you. One for you. We're on to item number two.
Okay.
As the Personnel Committee, we're going to look at the Fire Department Hiring Personnel Policy.
The last draft was this, right? So this is, okay, still what we have.
Mm-hmm.
So, the Fire Chief is here, and he can correct me when I say that. Let's see. The differences in this from our standard personnel is all about the hiring policy. And when they -- the on-call per diem volunteer members, they don't advertise. They normally just come in and the chief talks to them, gives them paperwork, and they'll fill that out, come back, their Cory is okay, then they go and have an interview with the department officers. So that varies from our hiring policy in that we always haven't hear any vacancies. They need to prepare a job vacancy notice, but theoretically, they always have a vacancy for a volunteer.
It's kind of rolling.
And then the full and part-time officers, which would be 20 hours per week, they would post that 10 days in-house. And then if they don't have three or more applicants, then it would get posted outside.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that you --
That's pretty much it. That's the nuts of it.
And how does that compare with -- is this what you -- your policy in Ashburn?
Yes. And other departments do the same thing.
Okay. Okay. I guess I would note that, being a strong chief, he does have significant power to establish these policies. My concern is that they meet sort of state standards and don't, you know, run afoul of any black line problem, but if this is the sort of prevailing approach, I don't really -- I don't have a problem with it.
Me neither. Okay, then we --
Okay. Should we take a -- do I hear a motion to approve this as the policy for the Fire and EMS Department, the hiring policy?
I would move to approve this as the Fire and EMS Department Hiring Policy.
Second?
Any other discussion?
Just while we have your attention, one of the things that I think I'm seeing as a kind of a creeping issue, and I think as long as we are mindful, is the issue of hiring people who either, you know, will go over 20 hours during the course of a budget season, or, you know, if you're hiring somebody on an on-call, or you're hiring somebody, you know, for less than 20 hours. And we cross the threshold of them becoming eligible for benefits. I think we're struggling on this. We haven't really come down on it yet, but I think we have to think of something in the budget process to sort of be apprised of that right now, because we sort of pay all the health insurance out of one item, and it doesn't come home to roost with a particular department. I could only characterize it as not even ad hoc, but post hoc in terms of, you know, our being able to manage that, so.
And again, as you read it, it says that any new significant part-time or full-time positions obviously have to be approved through the budget process.
Right. Right, and I think that's, yeah.
I'm not -- I don't want to take anybody that's, you know, 10 hours a week right now, and just because I have them here, I'm going to make them 20 hours a week.
Yeah.
You know, on January 1st.
Yeah.
That's not the -- certainly not the intent.
No, 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 and I was suggesting it was, but while we -- it was on -- it's been on our minds over the past couple of weeks, and while we had you here and were talking about hiring, we're likely to be coming out sometime in the next month or so as maybe some more detailed suggestions on that, but it's -- we see it at this point, you know, in a number of places as being kind of a hole in budget coordination, and again, it's because, you know, health insurance is sort of off on its own, and isn't really in anybody's budget except for the town, so, yeah.
Can you calculate about 30 to 40 percent of a new hire's benefits?
Yeah.
Or 30 to 40 percent of their salary is typically -- or pay is typically calculated for benefits.
Yeah, yeah, and again, you have -- you do have the possibility of crossing that line if you -- even with an on-call person, if you're hiring somebody who, you know, is working 18 hours a week.
Right, when we do the per diem shifts, we have to make sure that we don't exceed that in a calendar year.
Mm-hmm.
So they could one month exceed that, but the next month, they might not work at all, so we have to track that and make sure that they don't hit over the 19 hours a month.
Yeah, and I think again, you know, if you have somebody who's doing other work for the town, you probably have to take that into account as well. It's not that it's impossible, and if you get around to a budget cycle and you say, you know, there's this person who is, you know, is working around it, because they're in the town building 20 hours a week, they're good. It's not that they can't be that, but we should consider it.
When it comes to the white folks that are on the Highway Department and on the Fire Department, they can work up to 228 hours.
Right.
Before, you have to pay the over -- their overtime rate.
Right.
So there's a special exemption for call firefighters.
Yeah. Okay, good, good. All right.
Okay.
That was really on topic, but I just thought.
That was one issue, and then the next one is the personnel.
Have we voted?
You didn't vote.
Oh.
I kind of sidetracked things, I was saying.
Okay. A vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's always important.
All righty, yes, exactly.
Okay, the Personnel spreadsheet, which I emailed to everyone, and so, the change is where we took it from police and called it public safety.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to look at this?
I took a --
Sorry, I only have one. I brought one.
I took a quick glance at it at work, but I was.
I didn't know how many of those you wanted me to print. Do you want me to print them off, three of those?
Sure. Did you look at this, Paul? The spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. Was it correct?
I'm trying.
I was trying to read my handwriting. So, oh, I'll wait until Mary comes back.
What does "call deputy chief" mean as opposed to deputy chief? What does "call deputy chief" mean as opposed to deputy chief?
It's not full-time.
Huh?
It's not full-time.
It's not full-time.
So they just come in on a call versus -- all right. So, grade one, previously on this current year one, was almost all $10, except for the last three, nine, 10, 11, and 12, and it was like 1019 to 1088. So all of those went up to $11 because of the --
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage. And so last -- the last spreadsheet we looked at, every line was $11 except the last number 12.
Mm-hmm.
It was like $11.12.
Mm-hmm.
So I removed that grade. I think the only people on that grade anyway are the library pages. I took that out and moved everything up. So grade two is now grade one, grade three is grade two, so on and so forth, and grade nine, I put in new numbers. Did you see my other spreadsheet with the percentages? So I didn't know how these spreadsheets were concocted, so I went through and did -- the percentage you see there is the difference between the two grades.
Sorry?
See this percentage?
Yeah.
So.
Sorry, is that telling?
So between grade one and grade two in lane one, it's a 3 percent difference.
And between two and three?
It's 23 percent. And then between three and four, it's 20, and then the rest of them are 12 and 13.
Hmm.
So I'm not sure what the rationale went on that one. So I just picked a number and created this new grade nine and made it 12 percent.
Okay.
So now, instead of our highest salary going up to $70,000, which was the old one, it now goes up to 78.
Okay.
Well, that's a positive for employees.
Yes.
It is like this in like the teacher's schedule too, where it doesn't make sense, the percentages.
Oh, and between the percentages?
And it may have been because there were so many people in a certain lane, and they in particular got an increase in a contract somewhere along the line.
Yeah.
So it could be.
This doesn't have any contract.
No, no, but.
But I think this whole thing came out from that 2000, when we had someone come in and redo all of the.
2002, I think.
Yeah, all of the pay. We had.
That's where I came on.
Well, I was on Finance Committee, that's why I remember it. So that was the rationale for the new grade nine, the updated grade nine.
Okay.
I had no other -- I didn't know what else to go by.
And any of these in Highway, are we changing their at least grade number at this point?
Well, everybody's grade number will have to change.
Okay.
Because they're all a grade lower than they should be.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. You're not -- you can't leave people at a lesser point on this.
And that wasn't my intent.
No, 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 I understand.
Right.
So basically, people who were grade seven will now be called grade six, but that pay on the grid will be the same.
Yes.
I could, if it's easier, put grade one back and create a new grade 10.
The only reason why I suggest that might be a good idea is that we're in the middle of performance evaluations, and everyone was graded, and they're being given recommendations for step increases or grade, you know, and all these jobs have been created and advertised with certain classification grade ranges, so it's really.
Well, at some point, we're going to have to change it.
I know, but it's.
No, not necessarily, but because we could put grade one and just put NAs down.
Well, I mean, no, I'll just stay at $11, except that one. Which one? Let's see.
No, but I think, so basically, what you're saying is that we subtract one -- to do the conversion, we subtract one from the current grade level. Steps don't change. And somebody at their previous grade level, minus one, is going to be at the same compensation level.
Yes.
As they are now. So there's no change to compensation level.
No.
Well, as they turn in their information to give steps and so on to the employees, can they just use this and put them on the?
Yeah, the other thing is, I mean, we are the ones who actually record.
Record what?
The final step when you look at the Personnel. So even if somebody sends something through with the old grade, we can, you know, recommend it's the old grade plus one, and just note it's per, you know, reorganization of the
Schedule.
Of the Schedule. I don't think that.
Right.
This isn't going to cause Dennis any problems or anything, just note this doesn't tie.
He's not been advised of this.
Okay.
I can just put one back in.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you put one in and not just even if you put an A, you know.
I'll just leave it at 11.
Yeah, okay.
It's just going to be one grade with.
Nothing in it.
With, well, with the same pay from any of the steps.
And was there people in the grade one?
Town Hall Secretary.
Oh, oh.
And the library pages.
I still -- we're grade one.
There's nobody in the position of Town Hall Secretary. It's empty. Leanne was made manager, which is lower on the grid.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's still a grade that there could be something.
So Library Page was the only one for whom that conversion rule didn't apply.
Well, I mean, I just, they're just in a new grade now that actually gives them somewhere to go up from $11.
Yeah, no, all I was saying was that they were grade one and would stay grade one. Everybody else would have gone down a grade number, but they would not have.
That's true.
Okay.
I think all the library pages, if they were given their steps this year, would remain at $11. So getting a step increase of one step is not going to make any difference for any of them.
Mm-hmm.
And none of the ones in the middle changed, correct?
Well, my guess, my question is, should you get a step increase and not actually get an increase?
That's all that they can do unless you wanted to make an argument for bumping them up higher steps, or into another grade for a page.
Well, I mean, in this, if we kept this one that it is, now they have a chance to go after grade -- after step five, they'll actually get an increase.
I don't think that there are any that would be going up to five. They don't stay there long enough, because they're just passing through on their way to college or something. They never would get there.
I mean, you put -- you could put a grade one in that was the same as grade two, just to keep the numbers in place, you know? If we wanted to do that.
I can just put a grade one if this is too complicated for people.
I figured it out. Can't be that complicated.
If it's too complicated for managers who are doing it at this point.
June was surprised to see it, and Dennis has not seen it, and the evaluations that we have in hand, we have everyone's done but Selectmen. So June's only thing was, whatever this grid is, she needs it by this week so that she can copy it and put it into the budget package, and she says if you are going to take away a grade, that she thought that there should be an explanation for departments who've already submitted their performance evaluations.
We're not actually taking away a grade.
Whatever, the renumbering of it is to explain this whole thing.
Mm-hmm. Might be easier just to put.
I'll just put it back in. All right. And we'll have, now we'll have grade 10.
I'm used to being on school committee and dealing with this, and you have to negotiate every day.
I would say we could probably do it effective the next budget process. Probably not the best time to do it, just before.
I will be here.
But it doesn't mean we can do it while you're still here.
That's okay. I'll give you my spreadsheet.
So are you, would you be changing that and then giving it back to for signature? Want to go with, what is that? Are you going to sign that one tonight? No.
No, we're going to put one back in and renumber everything. So we're now going to have 10 grades instead of.
Nine.
Nine.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then for signature later in the week, then?
We can approve that.
Okay.
Today.
I'll put an E-signature on it just for now.
Okay. And then we can come in and sign it.
Okay.
Yes, so it can be approved and go out.
Yeah, I move to approve the Personnel Classification spreadsheet as.
Well, before we do that, so, just so you can see now, the descriptions for the Fire Department.
Yeah.
Fire EMS. So there's a Call Firefighter, a Call EMT, a Call Firefighter EMT, which is someone who does both things. A Call Lieutenant, and then a Firefighter EMT, so that would be someone who's a part-time or full-time firefighter. A Call Captain, a Call Lieutenant, which is the same thing, they're part-time or full-time. The Call Assistant.
A Call Captain or a Lieutenant.
Yeah.
Right, okay. And that's the difference between a part-time and a full-time doing the same position.
Similar to what the Call Police Chief.
Gotcha, yeah. And the Assistant Chief is the call position, and the Captain is the correspondent full-time position if it were created. And then the same thing is true of the next two.
Right.
Okay? And you're happy with where those are at this point?
I think that's.
Okay.
Judy, last week, you and June were talking about putting the Accountant and the Highway Superintendent on the grid. That was going to be what the grade 10 was going to be, but you didn't do it, or did you just decide not?
I didn't think about it. I mean, we could put them on the grid, but that would.
So you're talking about putting who?
Highway Superintendent.
Well, if.
In Accountant.
The Highway Superintendent is salary.
Mm-hmm.
So I wouldn't put them on the.
Hourly.
Hourly spreadsheet, and so is she.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't put her on the hourly spreadsheet either.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just, that's what you guys were talking about last week. That's fine.
Okay.
All right, I will put in the additional grade, and I'll remove the percentages.
All right, then I would move to approve the Personnel Classification spreadsheet as presented to this meeting with the addition back in of the grade one, and that's going to be 11 all the way across, is that right?
I think the last one is 1112.
Okay. So, but it's as it was in the previous one.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Second.
Any more discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then you can print it out, and we can come by and sign it.
Okay.
But you can, I mean, I think for purposes of budget package, you could put just, you know, slash S, you know, for all, yeah.
Yep, yep.
All right, C, which we talked about, tracking hours for employees shared between departments.
Ah, yes.
I don't know, do we have any information from other towns? I mean, there must be a fairly simple.
Do you want me to look into that? I wasn't asked to do that.
Sure. Did you get anything? I see it says here, Dennis, did you?
He didn't answer.
Dennis? No? Okay.
So June was curious to know what the policy would be on that by this week's payroll, because with Steve covering for Pete at the transfer station, he's, I don't know if I have a complete handle on this, but he's well over the 20 hours a week, so that's, he's already.
Qualifies for benefits.
Benefits, yep.
Yeah.
But as winter comes, and he's covering in multiple positions for three different or four different appointed authorities, the Board of Health, the Library of Trustees still have him budgeted, the Selectmen, and I know there's another, is it Election Worker? He does four different, you know, things, but with snow coming, he, there's potential for him being actually 40 hours a week. Do you know what I'm saying, with depending on the week? So June wondered if there was going to be a policy that she could insert in her budget package to discuss this.
A policy be, a policy about?
How to track shared employees, to track the 20-hour benefit threshold, the 40-hour overtime threshold. There's just no manner of communication, other than all payroll goes through the Treasurer's Office, but he's not interested, doesn't sound like he's interested in.
Well, he shouldn't be the one who has to track the hour.
Right, but does any one department also have to track the -- so for example, Keith? Would Keith have to track with the transfer station, with the library, with Eloise? Your suggestion was the second person who triggers someone being a shared employee, that second hiring appointing authority would be the one that's responsible for it.
That was my thought, because my thought was, you know, people who are hired, and then if you're hiring somebody, you know that they're working for somebody else.
Hopefully.
Well, presume, because you're interviewing them and all of that. And so my thought was that the first department didn't have to, but any second or third department had to track that and report it, and maybe that's too simple-minded, but I don't.
Let's pick on Steve for, poor Steve. So Steve has a 40-hour, 42-hour a week. Who pays the overtime?
Well, who? Who?
We're not.
Who employs him?
One thing at a time, that's why I said. What are we talking about here? If we're talking about tracking, then let's deal with that for a moment, and then this gets back to the budget issue I was just talking to the chief about, but that's another, that's a separate issue. So tracking, how do we?
That's the feedback that I got from June after she saw the last policy, and that's why this is back on the agenda again.
I understand, but that's the second question, I think.
Well, we don't have a town manager to track, and we don't have anybody centralized who's responsible for tracking, so it would have to be one of the departments, and there would have to be some communication going on, and they'd have to know about each other.
Well, again, again, maybe it's too simple-minded, but I thought if one department is hiring somebody who's already working for another department, that should be something they would know.
Well, he's working for four different departments.
He is already horsed us out of the barn, I mean, and we have to deal with him, because he's already working for four departments before we had a policy, but I'm talking about, you know, on an ongoing basis. It does strike me that somebody hiring from another department needs to track that and report that.
And we haven't checked to see what other towns do. We can, but.
We can.
But, you know, it's a lot simpler if you have, say, a town administrator who has someone who, you know, works for them, and that's part of their job description. We don't have a central person.
That's.
So we need to.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, something that, you know, is simple.
We'll make the Police Chief do it.
He's going to do it.
I thought you were just going to be the building supervisor.
I can't do it.
Yes.
That's why you have to show up at meetings.
Yeah, yeah. Any objection to that?
I see no objection.
I don't hear any. Yeah, I don't know, I think, as far as tracking goes, okay, I think we can say that when you hire somebody, you have to be aware if they're working for other towns, and you have to ask them, you know, how many, see how many hours. And then if you make that hiring decision, you as the second department should report that to Personnel and the Treasurer, maybe, or and maybe the Treasurer and the Accountant.
The other piece of that is that you're the second group, but if Group One, let's say the transfer station, suddenly needs them for another 10 hours a week, they have to tell you that there's an increase. Right? I presume that they have a budget that they base on a standard, you know, four hours, eight hours a week.
Mm-hmm.
But if you're going to exceed that.
Mm-hmm.
Then you're responsible to report it to.
And in most cases, are each individual department responsible for approval of these people, or does it always, are some of them, do some of them come through Personnel?
Well, everybody has to go through a payroll.
Right.
So every department head signs off on the payroll.
No, I mean, in the hiring process, though.
Well, if you're already hired by the town, you don't have to fill out another employment form.
So that might be where the.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so.
Lack in that.
Yep. So we said that if you hire somebody who's working for another department, you have to report that and report the number of hours. If a department increases the number of hours, they should have to report that. And those are the two circumstances in which you're going to go over it, right?
And they talked about holiday pay and overtime.
Now we have to talk about. Now we have to talk about... Now we have to talk about funding benefits. And this is what I was alluding to before. Right now, we don't really have a very good budget pressure. You know, health benefits totally just over in another budget item.
Disconnected from the position.
Disconnected completely. At least holiday and...
Overtime.
And overtime are, you know, are at least connected in, you know, with the department. Well, I think there are two... There are a couple of ways to do it. One is, you know, if you will, a sort of a last-in, first-out basis that the entity making the change that, you know, puts them over bears the cost. That's one way to do it. And the other way to do it would be to prorate it according to the number of hours in the relative departments. So if one department had somebody for 19 hours and another, you know, person had them for 11, you would divvy up the expense on the basis of that ratio.
Well, why don't we put this off for a week or two?
It'd have to be two, right?
Yeah. And see if we can find out how other towns do this.
I think particularly, I think on this, if you can find stuff on how to allocate benefits and overtime and stuff like that. Notification, I think, is actually less of a problem. And because we don't have an administrator. I think the answer that a lot of towns will give us is the administrator tracks those things. But I think particularly, if we could get a sense for how to allocate those things. That's the naughtier problem, to my way of thinking. I mean, we're small enough, we ought to be able to solve a notification problem, but...
Should be.
Yeah.
Be able to.
Okay.
Okay. Item three.
Yep.
Special Town Meeting. Olberg, Pisgah, Webb Joe, Special Town Meeting article.
Mm-hmm.
So the question on this was...
That because of subsequent developments, that the figure that's given in the special town meeting is too low.
Right.
I did discuss this with the moderator.
Uh-huh.
And my... I can't speak for him officially, obviously. But my sense was that he recognizes that this vote is a formality to qualify for the state grants, and that the money is actually being spent by the Concom out of the conservation fund. And I think on that basis that he was comfortable with the idea of increasing the figure to reflect what it should because it's really just an endorsement and a formal vote rather than a spending vote. And making the point that this is not a precedent for people, you know, upping actual, you know,
Right.
hard spending items on the...
Reason appropriate or any other.
Exactly, exactly. So again, I can't speak for him officially. And we just kind of kicked it around, and I got the sense that was...
Okay, so it's not... We're not going to know until the town meeting floor night?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll get over that.
Did you... Did you have something else you wanted to talk to us about? Okay.
Well, I didn't know if there was anything else that...
Didn't we want to talk to you about?
I didn't want to get volunteered for something, so...
All right. I just didn't want you to sit there.
Good plan.
And we won't...
Any concern with the buildings?
No, we won't volunteer for anything. If we were going to do that, we'd go into executive session, actually.
Thanks.
All righty.
Thank you.
Presentation on 1870 Town Hall.
Because Evy was out until today, I have not gotten a chance to get in touch with her. I am going to be in town tomorrow, and I'm going to try to
Catch up with her.
Get in touch with her. I mean, just really those items that we talked about. And I think if the two of us can get together tomorrow, we can still get it, you know, to you on Wednesday and get it up on the Facebook page.
You were going to talk to Dennis, too, or something?
Yes, about a different issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I offered to do that. And obviously, he had things that were much more compelling to deal with, like a new grandchild.
Right.
And he actually emailed me to say it could wait.
Okay.
But we did... I did go back and forth with him.
Everything can wait when you have a new grandchild.
So...
Capital Planning Committee bylaw.
Not yet.
Okay. Discuss policy log for record access law.
That was Dennis's question as well. So did you... Does that ring a bell? He had a concern about how this would be handled if this office and Chief Galvin... But I guess this office primarily for the town-type requests. How he would handle it? Would we keep a log of it? Of all the questions received or the requests received and our responses? I keep an electronic file of everything. I scan everything, and I keep it that way. To this point, I largely answered people electronically, so it's easy to keep an electronic record of what went out the door because it's a...
You just have a file of the responses, is that what?
Yeah, especially if there's going to be a duplicate coming along later. I just think it's easier to just keep an electronic-scanned version of it.
So your question is...
Nope, not my question. Dennis's question is, he wants to know if the selectmen who appointed the records access officer are going to have a policy or procedure on how the... How the...
The record of responses to record requests, okay? Well, I would say this. The selectmen... Why don't we say this? The selectmen believe, obviously, we need to keep a record of that. And I would suggest that we ask each of the record response officers to indicate to us what they believe is the most expeditious, you know, way to maintain this record. So for you, it may be this electronic file.
Well, you know...
Eloise may keep a ledger, you know, I don't know.
She's not agreed to be one of the town's record access officers, although by default, she really is. But she doesn't want to be one named to satisfy this law to be up on the website as a record access officer. So there's a page now on the website that says... But people are still going to probably default to her.
Sure.
I guess that she would try to fulfill what she has custody of herself. But I don't know that she's going to copy me on it. So again, without having a centralized point of contact for, you know...
I was unaware that she was not willing to do that. And obviously, if there were only those three points and you have three logs of various...
But it's not even just three points. If, let's say, a separately-elected or committee did not want to go through... If they received a records request, they could fulfill it themselves, and I wouldn't know about it. That's just another possibility. So I think... And that's not... Dennis hasn't even asked that question. But I was thinking, I couldn't... We couldn't certify that we've answered something within 10 days because I wouldn't have any knowledge of it. Another situation could be that the board or committee that has control of the records hasn't given it to me in time for 10 days. I'd respond within 10 days saying, I'm awaiting those, you know? I don't know what else I could do other than to answer the person saying, "We're still waiting for that set of documents to come through." I mean, it wouldn't be on the records access officer if they don't... We don't have control of these things.
Is this something that maybe we need to, like, make sure that the different departments are aware of?
Well, I will got it up on the web first.
Right.
And Dennis asked for what's the procedures and protocol for this. And I did write in my email these concerns that I wouldn't necessarily know about all the requests. So it'd be hard for us to track them all, all public records requests that came to the town if they didn't all funnel through this office. Separately-elected boards and committees, I don't know what they'd want to do. Do they want to send it through here? They want to fulfill it themselves? You know what I mean? I don't know.
Well, they'd have to... I think they'd at least have to report it to you.
I don't know that the law requires them to do that. The law requires that the town has one point of contact or at least one point of contact for someone to make a public records request to. If it landed with me, I could then find the appropriate board or committee to answer it. But I don't think the law...
Well, I don't... How many record requests do we get a year? We don't get, like, 500 requests.
There's different groups that are just doing this as... To test them. We've already had one. American Transparency sent one through here.
Right. But I mean, the Board of Health, how many... Unless they're in a lawsuit and somebody's requesting records, they don't normally get a records request. They usually...
We've somehow flown under the radar. Some towns get these regularly. They're very onerous, and they take a lot of manpower to get them done.
Well, school gets a lot. We're not including them in this group, are we?
No.
Not... I'm not clear, but I don't think so because the town...
No, they have their own central office.
We don't have custody of any of those records.
No.
So...
But technically, probably a BMS request would flow through here.
Okay. Why don't we put this one on the agenda for two weeks?
Two weeks out?
Because, I mean, the effective date is this is January 1st, 2017. And...
I thought I was being proactive and trying to knock it off now, but...
Well, no. And I mean, we've appointed somebody. But right now, I guess I'd need to look at the text of the law, which I certainly haven't done.
Okay. I did Google to try to see what other towns did. And I found another town that posted exactly what the Secretary of State says is the new law. Verbatim, what I sent in my initial email to everybody. So I asked Garth to put that up on the website with the only addition being me for the town and Chief Galvin for the police.
I suspect if you wait until after the election, you'll probably talk to Eloise about this again.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think that might be the issue. She looks a little overwhelmed tonight.
No, no, no. It's not just the election for her because a lot of people mistakenly believe that she is the keeper of all town records. So this isn't just election eve burnout.
No, I mean, she doesn't want to volunteer for any other thing.
No, I know. But this is a persistent problem that goes with town clerk's posts is that she gets hammered with these requests all the time.
Right.
And the frustrating thing for her is that she doesn't have custody of any of these things either.
Right.
Not. Some of them she has field.
I actually sent somebody to her. The woman that called you. For 61A. The chapter. And what's her name?
Oh, oh.
She called me first, and then she must have called you. And I said, "Check with Eloise."
Okay, yeah, let's put it on for two weeks.
We'll do the assessors of the DBA.
Because, I mean, you know, there's... Just looking at this, there's a lot of stuff that seems at least superficially kind of not hanging, you know, not hanging together in the sense that it says you have to produce at least one. You have to have at least one. But then they talk... They make... It seems in this explanation, they make a great deal of difference between an agency, which would be like Board of Health or whatever, I presume, RIO. But maybe agency means public agency, other than municipality. I don't know.
Could be that you... If there was a town administrator, perhaps it'd be easier. But to get a proactive sign-off from all these separate entities that they're either going to act as their own RIO or they're going to default over to use the central one.
And then, I mean, it talks about municipal RIOs required to post commonly requested records on their municipal websites, to the extent feasible. I mean, I don't know if that's municipal committee meeting. I don't know.
Well, that already... That's true.
Yeah.
So we always get a lot of payroll requests, which if it was in the annual report... Actually, the annual report itself, if that were online, would be something that would probably snuff out a lot of...
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, let's... Let me try to take a little more... Maybe I can even come in between now and two weeks from now and sit down with you for 45 minutes or so and go through it. Okay?
Sure. Sure.
We'll try to set up a time.
I mean, Dennis is the one that had the questions, but I see what he's saying.
Yeah, but you're the one who's going to have to...
Yeah, that's fine.
...get the answers because you're the RIO, so...
Well, I was going to just take that, what's up on the website, and send it to all department heads and committees and just saying, hey, if you have a records request, send it here.
Well, why don't we...
Because there's no...
Yeah, why don't I read through it? I'll have a copy of the law and any other guidance. I don't know. Maybe does Copman have, you know, a canned guide to this?
Copman, next Thursday, has a thing at the Lemonster Library for town officials in our area. We asked if we could host. They didn't.
On RIOs?
On the whole new record law, in which it's got to have a section on that.
That's a week from Thursday?
Right.
What time? Morning or afternoon?
It's like 3:30 until 7:00 at night. There's a part that's for staff only, and there's another one for boards and committees later. I can get you the agenda on that and send it to everybody again. I can't hit that one, and I wanted to. So I'm going to see if Copman Page offers it in another community. I was going to see if I could hit a later one.
And maybe, I mean, if they even have materials.
Yeah, I can ask.
Like a PowerPoint or whatever. Looking at that and the law, and if you and I sit down for 45 minutes, we'll certainly know more than we know sitting here tonight.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Okey-dokey. The building inspector has given us his resignation letter
Okay.
as of June 30th, 2017.
As of June 30th?
Yes.
Okay.
And apparently, we don't have a job description, although I thought we had a job description. But I take it that this is what he gave you, Mary?
That's what he gave the board back for the last round... The last contract. And that was his suggested addendum A to the contract, but it was not adopted. That's what he gave the board back for the last round, the last contract, and that was his suggested addendum A to the contract, but it was not adopted.
So it looks like a job description to me.
He thinks that's a good one to use to try to fill this vacant, you know, vacancy that comes up.
Yes, as I remember it, the reason the reason we never quite finalized this was the issue particularly of supervision and the need to consult on zoning enforcement issues. And that's why we never got to it. And that is something I'd like to work on for the, for the future if this person is going to be a zoning enforcement officer.
Is that in here? So I guess the first thing we need to do is get the, oh, we needed to, we need to ask the fire chief for job descriptions for all of those jobs.
Right, the things like clerk and the other
There's no clerk on this, the ones that are on the spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet. Oh. Right, but what he gave June, and I know we're going back now, what he gave June, as of June 30th, was the pay for fiscal year 17, fire department? Included two posts that aren't on the grid, on or off the grid. One was clerk and one was something else. That's in that package that I know you have to dig back for, but there's, there's more titles in that, in his listing than what there were ever before on the grid.
Okay, then we have two questions to ask. One is job descriptions.
So ask him that one.
And two, is there something that needs to be added to the grid?
So, should we all take the, this job description and look at it and
I think
Come back and then
I think the purely building inspector stuff in that is probably perfectly adequate. The zoning enforcement stuff is, I think, weaker.
Enforces the provisions of the Mass State Building Code and the town zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
Enforces regulations, well, you know what, I can write up a bunch of things that I would like to see
Good.
as a focus of our hiring.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm sure you can too.
Can you, Mary, run off a copy of that? So I have a hard copy?
Of the
Before we leave tonight?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and then finally, different forms of town government administration. I know, I just sent that out today, so I guess we could talk about it in two.
What's the matter? You backing off now?
So what, what we have that was voted by the town is the, I don't have it here. The administrative assistant position, which, yeah, I left that home. So there's a report here from the 1995 town report. The position was officially in 1995. In 1994, it got passed by, I sent you that. So, I'm pleased to be making this report as the town's first administrative assistant, blah, blah, blah. As a result of going through the interview process with the Board of Selectmen and after reading the reports in the Administrator Search Committee file, which we don't have, I have a good idea of what people are expecting to be accomplished. The selectmen set the following priorities: fostering communication between boards, commissions, officials, and employees; researching issues that are beyond the day-to-day issues that the board deals with; and helping Berlin benefit as much from various state and federal programs, which I think meant grants writing.
Yes.
So that's, that was about the extent of the job description when it was, actually, when it was voted at town meeting.
So the first year, 94 or 95, it was what was approved? It was the, just the job? No.
The
Because you sent two things, two years, right?
Yes. One, the, it was approved, let's see, but they said that a committee needed to go
Right. Must
This is 95, so it was 94. Oh, look, 1994 Solomon Pond Law Zoning Agreement.
I know that only too well.
Okay, so in 1994, it authorized the Board of Selectmen to place an article on the 1995 town meeting warrant that required the selectmen to hire and fund an administrative assistant to assist them and all other town officers and departments in administering town business. And then it got voted unanimously to amend it, to include and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a committee of three to five to study the appointment of an administrative assistant and present a report at the next annual town meeting. And then the motion was made in the seconded to amend it to replace the word authorize with require. And then it was voted to amend it to change the word require to authorize. And then it was voted to approve the amendment as amended.
We have fun at town meeting, huh?
So the final motion was
Maybe he really thinks that politics change.
No.
The final motion was, voted the town to authorize the Board of Selectmen to place an article in the 1995 town meeting warrant that requires the selectmen to hire and fund an administrative assistant to assist them and all other town officers and departments in administering town business and to require the Board of Selectmen to appoint a committee of three to five to study the appointment of an administrative assistant and present a report at the next annual town meeting. Which, far as I could tell, didn't happen.
Well, we did have a town administrator for a short time, did we not?
Yeah, but I mean, there was no report to read.
Was this when this happened?
Yes.
After 94 and 95?
Yeah, because her first report was from 1995.
Okay.
So the 95 meeting funded it.
Okay, and how long did that?
Well, that one you'd have to go look up and see. I think it
But does that mean that we are already, have already voted this and would not have to take it back to town meeting? Or do we have to take this back to town meeting again?
I would think that it's been voted.
Is that correct?
That's what it looks like to me. I mean, this was
It looked like to me too, but
I was still on planning board at this point, so I'm, you know,
Right.
Just another voter with regard to these things, but yeah, it seems like that's right.
Yes. But it's not a town, it's not a town administrator.
It is not.
So the difference between like a town manager is that they have authority to do contracts, to do a lot of what we do. Right? And, and this position
What does Bolton have?
Town manager.
Administrator.
Well, it's the same wording according to everything I read.
There's a difference in power. It's, of course, there's all shades along the way, but a town manager has more power than a town administrator.
Yeah. A town administrator doesn't actually have the hiring and firing.
Yeah, I don't, I think, yeah. Well, in any case, there's not a town around us, I looked this up, that doesn't have a town manager, administrator.
Okay.
Boylston, Clinton.
Yeah, it's funny, because I did, I did take a quick look, and I meant to bring them with me, but they're in the backpack in the car. I did take a quick look in the, in the train, I printed out the stuff that you sent. And immediately does stop, no. But I looked and, you know, it's funny, in one of the lists, I couldn't see like Bolton in any of those things, but that's why I was asking.
No, Don Lo.
Oh, I know Don Lo, I'm just saying, when they had a sort of catalog of what towns had adopted what things.
Right.
And Bolton wasn't on any list, which is why I was, that's why I was asking whether there was some special arrangement there or whether they were doing it as a
There's a slight problem though here. So in, in 1995, they voted to amend the personal bylaw establishing a new position called administrative assistant at grade 11. Such person to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen and to serve a term of one year. We don't have, I can make a grade 11.
See, probably then it was like grade nine through something.
But That'd be by contract though, so you wouldn't put it on the grid, just like with the police and fire chief.
Yeah. It's my guess.
Usually they are.
Well, I have to say, I, I joined the board in 2003, by which time all of this was far enough in the rearview mirror. I don't, can't remember it ever being discussed.
Well, uh
You remember having
Eighteen thousand, three sixty-three was their salary for the 96, 97.
Eighteen thousand?
Yep.
How many hours a week was that, I wonder?
It was 1997, too.
We're not talking about Peggy, right? She was there much longer than that.
No, this first person was Mary Connor.
Is that her name?
Well, that's the report she gives.
There was two, Peggy always told me.
I don't remember any Mary Connor. I thought it was, I can't remember what her name was.
Well, um
She wasn't thought of very fondly.
I guess what I'm feeling is that we need
I think we need to look at that.
Yeah, we need to look at this and, oh, here's a big report. She prepared the selectmen's budget for their review and approval. Mall growth, I mean, you can look at all this. This is a fairly
And what's her name?
Mary Connor.
Oh.
What year is that, Jim?
Maybe it was Mary Connor.
This is a report for 1996. Budget preparation, bidding and requests for proposals, reports, small town administrator meeting, so. The town will have to be concerned county government restructured. Wow. Well, I mean, we can read what she did.
Sounds like deja vu all over again. Okay.
Oh, so here's the Personnel Committee. This was a spreadsheet that was 16 grades by six steps.
And they were on it, she was on at 11, you said, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So 15 to 18.
Yep.
The same as the accountant. Well, it's something that we can
Mull over?
Mull over. If we wanted, I mean, the reason I brought it up now was if we wanted to fund this position, this is the time to do it. But you'd need a clear
Well, maybe we need to start with the job description.
Which we don't have, I guess.
Well, it'd be easy to get one from other towns, I suppose.
I could ask Peggy where it is in paper. I haven't seen it in writing, on the computer or anything, because our files on the computer don't go back that
You might be able to ask her more about it, because she would
She knows plenty about it.
Okay.
She lived through it.
Yes.
She would have supported this person at the same time at the board.
Okay. Why don't you see if Peggy knows if there's a job description somewhere? I'll look through this later.
You want this to, you want it later, yeah.
Oh, here it is. Okay. Is there anything else that people wish to bring before the board?
Nope.
I scheduled a 6:30 meeting for next week in case there's anything we need to do before the town meeting.
Town meeting is at 7?
7.
Yeah, that's good.
Are we meeting this Saturday or next Saturday?
This Saturday.
And we're meeting this Saturday.
Okay.
Nine o'clock.
Good that you reminded.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
The second.
On favor?
Aye.